Good afternoon. It's Monday, December 12th, 4:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments?
Do you want to turn agenda items? I don't know if you want to wait until the agenda items?
Yeah, we'll just wait till then, then. Thank you. We have some items that will be placed on our regular city commission and agenda, which is our minutes from our November 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th study sessions, and our December 5th study session, and then our November 16th regular meeting. I'll move us on to items for presentation and discussion. Our first one is applications for 2023 cereal malt beverage licenses. Easy for me to say. Melissa, come on up.
Mayor, Commissioner, good afternoon. These are the applications for the 2023 CMB license renewals. We did not have new any applicants this year, so these are just renewals from everybody from last year. Nice to stand for any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions? Are you okay with moving that on to the 21st agenda? We will. Thank you. All right, that'll move us on to item two, which is a revision to our Article 7 of the municipal code on cemeteries. Director Tharp, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. So, we put out in your package some changes that we had made to a couple of specific areas of the cemetery regulations. And so, just as a little background or reminder, this past spring, as it became mowing season, we had had a little issue as far as interpretation of some of the regulations that had been before you actually, the year before, and some changes that had been made. And so, we went back and looked at those and, as you can see, made some, I'm going to call them relatively small changes, that I believe spell out a little better what we hope to accomplish in the cemeteries. But I think more importantly than the paper that we look at and the regulations that we look at is the conversations that we had, both internally and with a number of members of the community. You know, and I think how we proceed forward, that is the most important part of what I would like for the commission to understand. We have always had people that were caring and compassionate and did everything they could to help our community members through tough times. That's always a tough time with the loss of anyone. And it's especially tough these days where the supply chain issues are, quite honestly, they're the same with headstones and the various things involved with cemetery as they are with everybody else. And so, what we have done internally is we have, you know, we will make a more concerted effort to make sure that if we have an issue, we try to make contact for one. And for two, that we consistently, and not just our superintendents, our sexton, but all of our crews consistently, you know, have a bit of a more caring attitude. Again, I'm not going to say we didn't have one before. I believe they did. But I think as we looked at some of the rules and began to see the black and white in the rules, we forgot about some of the rest. And so, those conversations have been had. We're going to come up on another spring here before we know it. It'll be here quickly. And the thing that I would want the community to understand also is, you know, regulations are there for a reason. You know, our cemeteries are a big job. They take a lot of work to maintain. And so, we need for the community, those people that, you know, especially spend time decorating those headstones, to be cognizant of how that might impact, you know, what we try to do to maintain all of those areas. None of these are easy. Highland in particular was not designed in straight lines. It runs in about 14,000 different directions. It makes it very difficult, you know, to keep it up. And so, that said, the regulations that we have in front of you, we would hope to adopt these into the existing regulations. And if you have any questions about those regulations, I would be more than happy to answer. Otherwise, we're going to move forward in a somewhat different manner than we have.
So, is this much different from what we had before? Or are we just saying that we're just going to be a little more compassionate in regard to the black and whites?
There are some differences there, Commissioner Skidmore. They are not major differences. There are still, we still feel like there's got to be regulations. There's got to be something that we can live by. But there again, I think the biggest change that you'll see there is that everything associated with that headstone belongs to that person. And so, if something lays on that headstone, really, just about no matter what, it just simply does not get messed with. It does not get picked up. It does not get moved. If it's laying on the ground and we know it's been on that headstone, it gets picked up and put back on the headstone. There again, please keep in mind that every time we have to stop and do something like that, you know, is time consumed to be getting things, you know, mowed or whatever that might be. That doesn't mean we're not going to do it. It just means that, you know, the effort becomes a bit different at that point, so.
And how many stones do we have out there? I'm just thinking, how many hours are spent weed whacking around these? It's got to be a...
There are thousands of stones. Yeah, literally thousands of stones. And I can tell you that I actually went out a couple of times, you know, just to help them with some of this other stuff that's going on. And it wasn't because they needed my help. It was more I was wanting to get a feel for that myself, to be quite honest with you. And I spent about, I spent about three hours one morning out there weed eating. And I managed to make it through about a quarter, about a half of one section. You know, and especially when things don't run in straight lines and you move from this place to that place, it's just not as simple as it might seem. You know, that doesn't mean we don't get it done. Our folks do a great job with taking care of these cemeteries. And, you know, the other one that I would point out to the commission and to the community is, you know, while we would like for something to always look perfect, that's not possible. It just simply isn't possible. Doesn't mean we're not working at it. It's just simply not possible. And that's especially true in the spring, you know, when things are growing fast and, you know, we're doing, you know, we keep up with three cemeteries, you know, plus all the parks in town and all the other things that are on the list to be done. So, you know, we've talked about different things. The city manager and I have, you know, talked about what it might look like to do some contract labor, you know, with some of this. We're still talking about, still thinking about some of those kinds of things. I have some concerns with that. And one of the biggest ones is the one that I just before, is, you know, we bring somebody in from the outside. Are they going to care as much as we want them to care, you know, about what happens to those headstones? It's pretty easy with the mower to get lost in those circles and move a headstone. You know, you got to be paying attention, so.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned contracting out some of that because that's one of the things I just wrote down, you know, could we, you know, to maybe alleviate some of that, you know, that time that you guys spend. And what I'd suggest is maybe we take care of those and then farm out some of that mowing somewhere else that isn't such a sensitive place to be mown.
Yeah. Well, and what I would tell you, Mayor Crowley, is that we have contracted some labor over the last two or three years. And so, it's not that we don't, you know. It's just, you know, where do we find that line that makes the most sense, you know, for what the community money is doing at that point, so.
Mr. Tharp, I appreciate the fact that you brought up that the cemetery staff, and I do believe they do a really great job of making sure that it is maintained and they honor everything that is placed and left in honor of their loved ones. But saying that, it is open to the public. And so, that doesn't mean that we have our eyes on every single headstone at every single moment that the cemetery is open.
Yes, that's a very good point, Commissioner Kaler. And I've seen some things on Facebook recently, which, quite honestly, I was very, very proud of. The people that put the things on Facebook because they pointed out that things had been stolen, you know, and they knew they had been stolen. It wasn't like our folks had gone around and were picking up everybody's flowers or whatever that might be. But they pointed out that they were very disappointed in the fact that somebody would go in the cemetery and actually steal something. And yes, that does happen. It does happen. And we cannot prevent all of that from happening. We're not there 24 hours a day or even seven days a week. But that is a very good point.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Or Director Tharp? Are you okay with moving this on? Do we need to...
There is absolutely no rush about this. And honestly, yes, I'd like to see it go to a regular meeting just so maybe we hit more people with what we said here and talked about.
Commissioners, what do you suggest? You want to wait or do you want to move it on to our... Well, we'll have another one if you want to put it on the 19th and just kind of go over it again with the other two commissioners if they happen to be here. Or we can just put it on the 21st if you'd like.
I'd like bringing another study session, I guess. I can get comments from Karen as well.
Commissioner Kaler, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's put it on our 19th study session. Thank you, Director Tharp.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to item three, which is our recommendation to add 11 properties to the Neighborhood Revitalization Program with Director Hall.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a few slides that'll come up in just a moment. Okay, so we have another batch of applications that have been found to meet the eligibility criteria in the Neighborhood Revitalization Program rules. So, I've had a few questions about the NRP and how it works. And the NRP is a plan or a program that's adopted by the three governing bodies by interlocal agreement. And that was last, that interlocal agreement was last amended, as I understand, in 2018. And so, what happens is we get these applications. They're reviewed by staff. There's a lot of work that goes into reviewing them. And then they're taken to the NRP Review Committee, which consists of a representative of each of the governing bodies. Commissioner Kaler sits on that review committee. And then they review these and then recommend them to be added to the program. So, with this latest batch, I believe this is the fifth batch for the year. So, we've had a lot of these. We have six new homes, which is pretty substantial. And then we have four residential remodels and one commercial remodel. It's actually a new building on a site and then some site improvements. Next slide, please. So, if you look at this map, this shows you how these are distributed throughout the city. These are, this is the current batch that you're looking at on this map. Those red dots, those are the new homes. What's interesting about this is there, in this particular batch, these new homes are concentrated in this neighborhood. So, you can see what kind of positive impact these could make on a particular area. Next slide.
Will you go back, please?
Sure.
Are those two dots over there outside of the boundaries?
So, that's Funston, that's Markley's addition that we...
It just hadn't been drawn in.
Yeah, I would assume it's not.
We are in the process of cleaning up our map, and that one has not been added to the map yet, but it has been approved.
You can find it green at the same...
I could have used a marker probably and drawn that in. Yeah, those are in the area. So, I'll go through these rather quickly. This is, there are three of these homes that are on Hamblin Street between Burrows and Lincoln, I think. Anyway, each of these is a three-bedroom, two-bath home by Van Knight Homes. Each one has an estimated value of improvements of $140,000. Next slide. Another one of the homes on Hamblin. And same thing. Okay, so these are the two new homes on Funston by Home Start Builders. And these have an estimated improvement value of $215,000. Both three-bedroom, two-bath homes. Next slide. This is a home on 747 South Sycamore. It's at Sycamore. Estimated value of improvements is $120,000. This is a two-bed, one-bath home with a garage.
Just so people know, when we say that 25%, I figure like on that one there, $9,000. As long as the improvements exceed that, that's what qualifies this?
Yeah, they have to equal or exceed that to qualify.
Which obviously I'll do, okay.
Yes. And new homes get a rebate of 95% for 10 years. So, now we're into the remodels. This one has an estimated improvement value of $31,000. So, the remodels, these are substantial remodels. They range in improvement value of from $31,000 to $50,000. Next slide. This is the next one. Next slide. That one's a $50,000 estimated value. Again, these get a tax rebate of 95% for five years.
Director Hall, if I could on this one. The NRP is a great program. It's doing a lot of good for our community, not just new but old. But the good thing about this one, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is a condemned house.
I was not aware of that.
I believe we condemned this a year or so ago. And the good thing about that is we're not using taxpayer dollars to tear it down. It's actually, this NRP is being used to revitalize that blighted property and bring it up to a living standard.
Yeah, and I think sometimes we get pressure to demo houses, but it does take some money.
Sure.
It's pretty significant that what has to happen.
Sure, but maybe without the NRP, they might not be doing that and we'd have had, you know, utilized tax dollars to tear it down.
Right, right.
So, it's a good program.
Next slide. So, this is the last one. This is a commercial. This is a new commercial building. It's a greenhouse. You might be familiar with it. It's at Logan and Main. It's part of the Wet Lilies Project. There's a greenhouse. And the associated improvements, with the improvements, I can tell you the estimated value is really over $65,000 with all the site improvements. So, all of these improvements together, they represent almost $1.2 million in improvement value. So, pretty significant. And we think that we've done now five of these throughout the year. There's a lot going on. And that concludes the slides. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
I think something gets also lost to consider is the fact the sales taxes of all these people could be considered locally and so that sales tax adds to our market volume.
I can see that.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Hall? Would you like to review these again or just move them on to the 21st?
I think we're going to move.
Let's do it. Moving on to our 21st agenda. Thank you, Director Hall.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to item four, which is the Cottonwood Listation Contractor Selection.
Dan?
Yes.
We do have a lovely comment on the side.
All right, thank you. Do you want to come on up?
Aaron Poe here. Neighbor to where the construction will eventually be in on this project. My wife and I had bought the property. It was a foreclosed property just outside the city limits. And so, our north property line is adjacent to the Neosho County Community College's south property line. And so, anyway, we built there about seven years ago. And so, it was a foreclosed property, built a new home there and decided to set in roots and that's our life moving forward. So, just had some comments on the project. Obviously, the bid opening caused traffic and things to be coming down our road. And that's how I discovered this project was about to happen. And so, once I understood that, I just talked to some of the contractors and some of the drawings and seen what was about to come. So, I'd heard of that because I knew that there was some poor drilling that had been done some years back. And so, this project has been underway for some time. And I don't mean to get in the way of the city, but I also want to make sure that we take in consideration our livelihoods moving forward because I'll be seeing this list station for the rest of, where I plan on staying for the rest of my life. So, again, we put our roots in. So, I had a couple items that if the city and folks would take into consideration. Obviously, the best request would be if we could be moved north at all. If it could be moved north toward 100 feet at least, it would be not quite so much of an eyesore and quite a potential I would have done some things different on our home had we known that it was going to be there. And so, that is what it is. If that can't be considered for relocating further to the north, the property on the Neosho side is pretty well vacant everywhere south of it. But I also understand there's easements and things that are been in place. So, understood there. As far as if it can't be relocated, some other things to make it more residentially pleasing, at least for our immediate area, possibly different fence considerations or just to minimize the impact that it may have on our property negatively, be it safety-wise or what have you, or value to our property. And so, some of those items might be a gate switch or something for the security light because it'll be shining directly, of course, in our bedroom window. So, it'd be nice if we could have some of those type of considerations, at least if possible. The other items, as I had reviewed some of the BG Consultants' drawings, this work had been done in 2006 or '07, I believe. And so, properties have changed owners since then. Greg has originally owned our property, which it went into foreclosure. And that's who I got that purchase from at that point in time, was the bank who held that. And then, in addition to that, the Neosho County Community College campus has been added on there as well. And so, now that's under different ownership. I don't know if there's any considerations of that. So, anyway, on the drawing, if those items could be updated, the people that were out here, the contractors that were bidding on this, weren't necessarily quite aware. It wasn't, they weren't really sure where the construction needed to take place. So, of course, after I had seen their drawings, I was like, well, you're about 150 yards south of where you need to be. This is in front of our home. And so, our home wasn't referenced on these drawings. The home was there even in the '70s originally. Not the home that's there today. But anyway, long and short, I think there are some drawing revisions. I can leave notes so I don't take up this whole public, my little public timeframe that I have here. And so, I have some itemized notes that I can give you on that if it'd be any consideration.
What is your address again?
220 North Cottonwood Street.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Aaron, A-A-R-O-N, Poe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we're basically at the end of Cottonwood Street. And then the items, now that we've recently installed a new septic system, of course, and now this is going to be very close to it. The other consideration I would have, if you would consider waiving, if I ever have any problems with my current septic, to be able to waive the fee to tie into the city sewer for that tap charge. And that way, if I do have a problem, something to be, I guess, admirable from the city side if I could ask of it. But that's a if and when situation, of course. And lastly, again, just a note of our home in reference to the planned work because contractors weren't really aware of some of the landmarks, I think, so that they could really understand where they were at without just knowing that the survey pins and where things were at. I think a lot of growth has happened probably since 2006. So, it was a little difficult. The last item I have, I'm sorry, I may be a run-on sentence here, but would be that Yates', Yates's family has bought the 92 acres behind us, that the original Crowler property that has the easement for the utility on. And so, they weren't very much aware of what was going on until I had made the phone call because these people were traipsing around them. Again, contractors looking to do bids for the sale on that work. And so, anyway, I just asked you to consider some of those items and I'd be happy to give you a list of some of these things I've talked about so you don't have to keep making notes if you are. Other than that, that wraps up my request and consideration to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Poe, for coming in. And I believe, I don't know if you and Dennis have ever had a conversation about, you know, some of these issues, but certainly want to make sure that you guys get in contact with each other and make, you know, each other aware of kind of the process and then, you know, certainly be mindful of your concerns, so.
Yeah, I had made contact with Dennis just before Thanksgiving, I think it was, and had some conversation with him briefly, and so, appreciated.
Well, I think with any construction that we have in town, we certainly don't want to, you know, upset anybody's lifestyle. But, you know, sometimes it has to, just like with the Cedar Project. But they certainly, you know, try to have enough forethought to not disrupt anybody as much as possible. So, certainly keep the dialogue open between you and Dennis and if us, if necessary, and hopefully we can accommodate some of your concerns.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to talk to us about this?
So, this is actually good news. Since oftentimes we're up here talking about bad news, but this, as we see it right now, is very good news. You saw the letter from our city engineer. And basically, what that says is we had quite a range in the bids for this particular project. As all or most of you know, sometimes when you have a bid that is extremely low, it is a cause for concern. You know, there is a lot of cause to wonder whether everything got included in their bid, whether, you know, you're going to see a lot of change orders, a lot of things that are unwanted in a project like this. That being the case, we made a determination that with the differences in the bid, it was more than worth our time to bring in the low bidder. Legacy construction is really one that none of us have any real experience with. And them being the low bidder, we did, we brought them in. We sat down, we talked for about an hour one day. After that conversation, we are convinced that they have included by their numbers everything that is involved in this project and that they are more than capable of this project. They brought in their driller that would do the work underneath the river to make the river crossing. They brought in their foreman, who actually just lives about six miles west of town. And our belief is, is that even, although there is a fairly large discrepancy in these bids, even to the engineer's estimate, that Legacy Underground is highly capable of completing this project. And so, what we really need or asking from the commission is that you allow us to move this project forward, bring on Legacy Underground as the contractor for this project. And we would be looking at breaking ground fairly soon.
Dennis, this is a base grant project.
This is a base grant project. And honestly, you know, our base grant was for $5 million, but we had three relatively large projects involved in that, as you all will remember. And so, by being comfortable with a bid that is a lower bid than what we anticipated, that does leave a little more room in that $5 million to get some other things done.
Would you like, or are you requesting action out of the commission today?
I would request action. I mean, we can move this on if you would like. I don't know that it warrants necessarily going to a regular meeting, but if that is the commission's desire, we can certainly do so.
At the area, Mr. Poe, is there any accommodations you would see or recommend that we could?
I talked to Mr. Poe for quite a while on the phone and...
I had talked to Mr. Poe for quite a, quite a while on the phone and, uh, we didn't really talk about specific things that, that, uh, might be asking for. And, uh, you know, quite honestly, that most anything can be done. Uh, I would like to sit down with, with, uh, Aaron and talk a little more just exactly, you know, what he's thinking, you know, to that end. This, this was interesting to me. This project has been on the books for literally for years. And so a number of the easements and, and, and some of those kinds of things that were done, they were, they were done literally years ago. I think it's sad, quite honestly, that when somebody buys a property, they're not aware that those easements are there. Uh, you know, to me, that's something that should happen through, you know, through the real estate company, through the, the county, whatever that might be at that point in time. I don't know that that specifically would be the city's responsibility to make sure they knew those easements were there. But, uh...
That should be on the title work, I would think.
Yeah, yeah. You would think it would be in place someplace, but, uh, in, in talking to Mr. Poe, he, he, there's, he's never been unreasonable about anything. You know, we'll sit down and talk more and we'll figure out ways to, you know, to make this work for everybody. There's, there's always ways to accommodate certain, you know, certain things. And, you know, we, we've talked more than once about, you know, what we want things. We're, we're working on the Rockwood Lift Station right now, you know, and that's really right in the middle of, of a residential subdivision. And, and at the end of the day, we want people to drive by it every day and just pretty much forget it's there. And that's kind of the same thing we'll be shooting for, you know, with this project. We're, we're not in, in the business of, uh, making people feel uncomfortable in their own home. That's not going to be any attempt for us, but...
Director Tharp, what kind of protections does the city have if Legacy is not able to fulfill their duties?
Well, Legacy is bonded and insured just like any other company. We've made sure all of those things were in place as we went through, uh, the bid tabulations. Uh, they have everything in place, just like every other contractor that bid. And, and so, uh, you know, should they not complete this project, uh, you know, they're, they're on, on the hook, just like any other contractor would be.
How tall of a structure would this be, Dennis?
The lift station itself really is not a tall structure. We're probably looking at something that's what, less than eight feet tall, you know, six to seven feet tall probably. Uh, in this particular instance, we haven't, we haven't really talked about it enough. Some, I really hate to throw things out there, but there's a number of ways to, to dress these enclosures up, you know, whether it be, you know, what, what the paint looks like on it, you know, or, or, you know, whether we do some kind of fencing around it. There, there's a number of ways to, you know, make this to where it's, uh, not an eyesore, so to speak.
Well, there are several lift stations in our community. I mean...
We have one or two, yes. We certainly do.
So, yeah, I was like, so I don't even know that, um, like you said, it's one of those things that I'm not even sure that the community realizes when they drive by. I mean, I know there's one not far from my house. There's actually two not far from my house, so...
We have a number of them.
Yeah, so it's...
Yeah, yeah. Just look at Dan, he told me, he told me 11, so...
Sure. This one will be an acceptable one. We'll have not compared the other lift stations fairly sizable in nature.
I mean, I don't know that this is any, any larger than any of our others, you know. It would probably compare to, I'm going to say it compares to our River Lift Station down here. And if you look at that enclosure, it's, that's an old enclosure, you know, that is kind of antiquated to what things are these days. And, uh, I think we can do something better than that.
Will the diesel generator be included or not included on this situation?
There is generation included in this, but the only time a diesel generator runs is when the electricity is out.
Sure.
You know, and so, yeah, it's not something you're going to hear running all the time.
Commissioners, any other questions for Director Tharp? How would you like to move forward?
I think I'm trying to prove if we need an official motion. Uh, I'd make a motion to approve, is it item four? Item number four on the Commission Cottonwood Lift Station Contractor selection.
And I don't think, and to bend, so the accommodations to Mr. Poe, or is, uh, doing what we can to accommodate our neighbors?
Once you approve this, then, uh, Mr. Tharp will talk to Legacy about any accommodation that could...
Yeah, we will talk both to our engineer and to the, to the contractor. Like I say, anytime we do a project, we try to be as disruptive as possible, but we all know that, you know...
No, you don't try to be as disruptive as possible. I stand corrected.
I stand corrected.
Hey, wait till we approve it first. Is there a second? Mike, did you say it?
Yeah, I'm second.
Okay. Motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion's approved. Thank you, Director Tharp. Stick around though. Uh, item five is a solar energy proposal.
So, um, Dennis and I, discussions with the mayor with this backhoe in here. It's been languishing there for a couple of years. And actually what Mr. Tharp has indicated to me is that, um, the solar power landscape has changed and there's other entities out there putting this together. And I think Dennis's recommendation, if I didn't misunderstand him, was that we ought to just not take any action on this and not pursue it.
Yeah, and I always hate to make a recommendation. I, I think that's, you know, for, uh, for the commission to decide, but, but I, I do believe the landscape has changed. I, I do believe that, uh, that this project, as we have talked about, the, the partnership with Evergy, uh, I do believe that it can make some sense. Uh, but there are so many options out there and, uh, and it's not just the renewable landscape that I believe is changing. We've even seen the cost of this particular project come down somewhat over a period of time. You know, what does that mean moving forward? You know, I wish I had the crystal ball. I truly wish I had a crystal ball that, you know, could move this community for sure in the right direction, but I just simply don't. In, in conversations, you know, with, uh, with all of the people that, that we know in the industry back and forth, you know, I, I think it can make some sense to, to hold off a little bit. The other thing that I would say is that, you know, uh, our contract with GRDA, and you've heard this before, is also up here in, in a couple of years. A lot of options to that, you know? There, there are options that we can do that even buy us time until we would make a decision as to what exactly we want to do. What I would say commissioners is that at some point in time, we are going to have to make a decision to do some things. You know, it's probably not one thing. It's probably a number of things in order to, to keep us moving forward and keep, keep the diversified portfolio that we have. Renewables can certainly be a part of that. One of the, one of the things that, that bothers us maybe a little bit is that we haven't really seen the, uh, the battery technology develop yet, you know, and the storage capabilities, you know, which I think really begin to make solar even, even more viable. Right now, solar is, you know, it's, it works when the sun shines and it works sometimes when it doesn't completely. But the, there, there are some drawbacks to solar, just like anything else. Uh, one of the other things, you know, we've done, put some numbers to some of the work that we would need to do upfront as far as the, this project is concerned. Um, you know, we were looking at the fencing, we were looking at, uh, the laydown areas, the grading, uh, the transformers that we would need for this project, you know? So honestly, we're talking about probably a million dollars upfront just to get all of those things done, you know? So I think it's a, you know, it's a consideration at least that, and more than happy to bring Evergy back, to bring KMEA back, continue having discussions, but I don't, I don't want to feel like that I'm wasting the commission's time or any of their time either, if that's not where we want to go at this point in time. And, and honestly, I've kind of got a feeling from the commission that maybe that's not where we want to go at this point in time. So, so I would just ask for direction from you all, you know, as to, to what we want to look at, you know? I, I believe this community, community can benefit from, uh, from some, some other types of generation, you know? We, we can be looking at some more dual fuel reciprocating generation that, that we've seen benefit us quite a bit over in, you know, some, uh, uh, some extreme weather events. And, and honestly, a solar field drive wouldn't amount to us at all, you know, in an event like that. So, yeah, I guess, you know, really we're, I just, we just wanted to kind of talk a little bit and, and, and we wanted to hear what, what your all's thoughts were and, and where you want us to take this.
I know I just had some concerns with the cost of the project and the, like, the time, the leasing, the ground, all the other expenses associated with it. So I guess I was hesitant to move forward with it as the cost.
I think you're right to be, as State Commissioner. I just don't, from my perspective, but you're the ones that have signed off on it. It does not, it does not look like a deal I could embrace or come to a positive feeling.
The, the only thing I would throw out there about that is, you know, we're talking about, uh, anytime we talk about generation, and I mean, that's pretty much anytime that we talk about generation, no matter what type of generation it is, we're really talking about the 1.2 million dollars per megawatt. So whatever we would decide to do to, to create that capacity, which GRDA goes away and we would lose a significant amount of capacity, to replace that capacity, if we want to do it with generation that not only helps reliability, but gives us the ability to sell into the market, we're looking at costs. You know, we're looking at something like that 1.2 million dollars per megawatt.
I don't think the metrics in this deal work for the city. I think there's some cost out there that you just don't know what they are, especially if you inherit it, especially if you need to do the maintenance on it. You have no idea what that cost is going to be, what it's going to cost you to hire somebody to do it.
I've been reading more and more about fusion and future of that. Of course, I wish, like you said, crystal ball, 10 years from now, 15 years, where would we be with that? I think there's a lot of potential there for cost efficiency and using fusion.
I think there's a number of products. The other thing, you know, that we have looked at some, and here again, there's costs in what we're talking about, but we know for a fact that we have a couple of companies that are buying out, buying up land. Uh, they're buying really to the south and east of us, out around the airport area, out around proximity parks, some of it, that are looking at, uh, installing solar. Now, anytime we buy from a large scale solar or something like that, there are other costs that get incurred at that point in time. So I, I don't know at the end of the day whether, you know, buying from a, an array like that is going to necessarily be any more or less expensive, uh, as far as per kilowatt. And you're going to have some other costs. There's going to be transmission costs. I don't care if it's across the street, there's still the transmission cost that, that gets involved at that point in time. So there's, there's always other costs that, that, that come into play. The, there again, the thing I would ask the commission to bear in mind is, you know, that within the next couple of years, and there again, I say that a little bit tongue in cheek because we do not, we do not have an offer back from GRDA at this point in time and what that might look like moving forward either, you know? So, uh, it's some things, it's, it's very hard for us just to sit here and say, yeah, well, it's going to go away. Well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, because we haven't seen any kind of offer from them. And maybe that partially goes away. I, I, I simply don't know.
We heard this, um, almost exactly a year ago. We heard a presentation from KMEA. And I pulled up that presentation and it appears as though, um, at that time, we had had some conversations about a planning phase and I think there wasn't, there's some, um, some drilling that was going to be done to see some sampling.
We did some geotech work. We, we are on the hook right now. We, we made the decision to go ahead with the geotech work on the property that we were looking to install this. And so I believe it was about $12,000 worth of geotech work that we will need to pay Evergy for at that point in time. In the scheme of things, you know, $12,000 is a lot of money, but in the scheme of things, if this is not, you know, what the commission believes we want to do, that's cost of doing business.
No, 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 please don't think that, um, that I am bringing that up in a punitive nature, because I certainly am not. I just, I guess, um, what were the results of that, of that, those...
Oh, we were good to go. Everything was fine up there. Yeah, we were good to go. There's no problem with the, the area out there. The soil is good.
Yeah, that's research that available if we were to choose to move forward and do this again. And you don't have to redo it.
No, absolutely.
I mean, it's not going to change.
It's our information.
Yeah.
Research that's available for other opportunities out there also.
Yeah.
I just know the borrowing costs have gone up, obviously. I know that you had a projection for about 30 years ago of the cost and I just know that, I don't know what the rate was at that time. They figured it, I think, but it's higher. So again, more added cost to it than anticipated a year ago.
Yeah, well, actually the cost actually went down some. And the reason for that is that some of the equipment to install the solar array went down some, which offset the difference in what the rates are right now, you know? So it actually, and there again, it wasn't hugely significant, but it did go down some.
Did you guys have, I know you talked about not wanting to waste our time and I obviously don't want to waste your time in numbers and figuring. I used to have heard anecdotally, I don't know this, that Evergy has 11% increase coming the next five years annually.
They do.
Do we have anything along those lines that, to spitball, obviously, like you said, you know, a crystal ball, your best guess on what cost will look like kind of from that, from our purchasing power in time, as opposed to what it would mean to do this?
We do not purchase power directly from Evergy.
Okay. Are there, are there in GRDA, they're right? Are they not?
No, they are not. That is a Grand River Dam authority. Uh, Evergy would have some impacts on the market in the way the market is today, but our products that we sell into the market are all, all not associated with, with Evergy and everything, and that we do not have in products to cover our load is bought directly out of the market. I can get into a whole spiel here, but then we're going to go for a while.
No, that's...
We don't have an interconnect with them.
We have an interconnect with Evergy, but that is just the way we get the power. That doesn't mean it's Evergy's power. We have a number of interconnects with Evergy. And Evergy has been a great partner in the things that we do. Please don't get me wrong, I'm not sitting here talking bad about Evergy, not any way, shape or form. We have a great partnership with them in a number of things that we do. And, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know for a fact that this is maybe not a way to go at some point, but I just have had the feeling, you know, as we have these conversations that, that maybe we weren't ready to do that yet.
I was never too excited about this pro, this project, um, only because of how new it was. Um, you know, some of the folks that we reached out to surrounding areas, they'd only had it a couple of years. Um, and, and, you know, to the, to put some more years behind how long they've had it and to see really the relationship with Evergy and, and how that was going, um, how the array was maintained, how long, and I know things are different, you know, from panel to panel and so on and so forth, but the lifespan that they were getting out of panels and, and things like that, that's more what I was concerned about. I know the new shiny toy is always great to have, um, but, um, not if it's broke down on the side of the road either. So that's why I was not concerned, uh, not excited about it at this point. And I, I think you're right, if we maybe wait a few more years, um, if we could, um, and look and, and reach back to it then, and then maybe at that point we decide to go that route, use the geotech that we already have and nothing's at a loss at that point.
Yeah, and, and we're making an assumption here, you know, I will inform the property owner that we are, if that's the decision, maybe we're not moving forward. And so we're kind of making an assumption that that property is still going to be, you know, available to lease at that point in time. We're doing nothing to hold it, so...
Commissioners, any other comments? Do we have, uh, some sort of direction to Director Tharp about how we want to, or we'd like him to move forward on the solar energy table at now, at this point?
Put it on ice.
Put it on ice. Consensus? I think you have a consensus at this point, just to hold off and we'll see what the future brings.
That's what we will do. We will, we, we will continue to bring other options. Like I said, commissioners, this is something that, that we don't want to wait till the last minute. You know, there, there are, there are options. There are things that we can do through the market, through KMEA. Uh, but at the same point in time, we want to do the things that are supporting our community at the same, i- in that same process. So, uh, we will be back to you with, with other thoughts and we'll talk them through.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It moves on to item six, which is a memorandum of understanding for an outdoor fitness course. Director Tharp, you want to talk about that?
Yeah. Another kind of exciting thing. We have been working with a national fitness campaign that has been in the process of putting these fitness, fitness courts in for some time. We will, as we go through this process, continue to, to show some short videos and some things like that and make them available to you. So you, you be, you see a little more all the time of what we're talking about doing. This project is partially funded by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Blue Cross and Blue Shield, in this particular grant, will grant anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000. We have been granted $50,000 through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And then as we went through this process, we were actually working on a 23 project. And what I will tell you is they came back to us and said, are you ready to move forward? Well, we said, we're probably as ready now as we will be in 23. What's, what's the deal? Well, they had a 2022 project come available. The 2022 projects, the upfront cost was $15,000 less than the 2023 project. So we started that conversation. And that is the, the MOU that, that you have in front of you. The, the project itself, on top of the, the $50,000 with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, on the 2022 project is about $92,350 that the city, the community would need to come up with. Been working with Melissa, and we believe we have some options, nothing in writing yet, but we believe we have some options and we've got some more to talk to yet related to some partners in this. We believe, and it's always good to believe, I guess, but we believe that the vast majority of that $92,350 we can come up with in, in donations and, and partners, people that want to be a part of this project. We need, in order to keep this project moving forward, we need the commission's approval to allow the city manager to, to sign this memorandum of understanding that would then keep the project moving forward. We have some dollars that, that need to be taken care of, actually by the end of the year. We have about $30,000 that it would take to get the fitness court in our possession and basically just storing it at that point in time. And then there would be beyond that two other payments of $30,000, which I think you all saw in the, in the memo that, that was created. So I believe what we are asking today is one, if the, the commission is interested in moving forward with this, and two, if we are, that, that you can grant permission for us to sign this memorandum of, of understanding and, and continue on the process. Once we have this memorandum, we have a little more teeth in our, in our ability to, to get out there and fundraise. And, and so people would understand exactly what these costs are and that, that we are committed to, to making this work. And I would answer any questions.
This is movement you'd like to done today because it appears as though, or well, from the MOU.
We are on kind of a short timetable, just simply because of it being a 22 project. This project, like all others, they want to get their books closed out, you know, before the end of the year. And so they would like, you know, for us to, they would want to see that $30,000 to, to get the, the fitness court here installed, which would allow them to close out their books and then allow us to. It doesn't change the timeframe. You know, we're still probably going to be looking at, you know, spring, summer of, of 23 in order to get this, this put together. The cost to install this is honestly another $25,000, $30,000. But at this point in time, we haven't figured out that, just like a lot of the playground equipment and the other things that we do, that we can do all those things ourselves, it, it appears to be just another giant jigsaw puzzle, you know, is really what it kind of boils down to. And, and we have, we have all of the capabilities necessary to, to take care of that. So that cost we would not incur. We would have a concrete cost. This, this whole thing sits on a concrete pad and it's a 40 by 40 pad. Be, be a little cost in that, but not something that would significantly impact. It's something that we could, I believe, do even through budget and some of our special, special parks monies and those, those kinds of things.
It's exciting. I mean, if you Google, if you Google this, there's all kinds of information out there about it.
It really, and it's really just a, it's a newer version for those of you that have been to Kansas Park, which I'm sure everybody has. There, there is a fitness court out there. It's a wooden fitness court that, you know, kind of sets up on the, the northeast corner there. And this is just really a newer version of that. We've got really three or four places that we're looking at. Forest Park would be one, Kansas Park would be another one. We've talked a little bit about maybe over around the teen park. So we, we have some options as far as place to put it. And, and we just want to create as much visibility and be able to work with the, the fitness group. They, they even have consultants that come out and look at your, your, your areas that you have identified and, and help choose that area. So, so, yeah, I think it's pretty exciting. I, I think, I think, I think it's geared maybe a little bit towards the, the senior population. But I can tell you right now, when we went and looked at the one at Garnet, there's a lot of that the seniors ain't going to have anything to do with.
Like the QR code thing?
That might be one.
Commissioners, any, any questions or comments for Director Tharp?
Great idea.
Are you going to, you need a motion to accept?
I think we proceed with this.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Not? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
All right.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Director Tharp. That moves on. Item seven, we're actually going to not discuss today. Director Landis has a few updates that she wants to get in line before she brings it back to us. So I believe that might be on our next week agenda. So that'll move us on to item eight, which is our lease purchase bids with Director Landis.
Thank you. So I did distribute these materials to you this evening. I apologize for not having it in the packet. But we did open these bids last Wednesday. And this is for the, earlier in the year, you approved reimbursement resolutions for three different vehicles. It was our bucket truck and two patrol units for the police department. And so we did send out the, the request for bids on November 28th. We received four in return and we opened them on December 7th. And the reason that it took us a little longer to get them back to you, the, the tabulations were done a little differently by each bank. And so we were unable to do an all-in cost comparison. And so what we did is sent this out to our financial advisor to put all the amortizations into one, one program so that we could make sure we were comparing them fairly. And there's a reason for that, because a couple of them do include other fees or what might, they might consider closing fees, or they might have them titled differently. Two of the bids did not include fees. We wanted to make sure that, because the rates were close enough in comparison, that by adding back those fees, that it didn't actually cause, you know, one that might have a little bit higher interest rate to be the actual winning bid or, or lowest cost to us overall. So we did sum it out. We today receive back those comparisons. So in total, the lowest interest rate and the total all-in cost, lowest amount for the city would be with Oakstar Bank. And we, the process for this might move a little more quickly than normal in that we'd like to close on this before the end of the year. So what we would be asking today is that you at least give us the acknowledgement to, or the opportunity to move ahead by prepare, to prepare the lease purchase documents with the bank and bring those back to you next Monday to see that agreement. And then that would go on to your next regular meeting. I might note here that I think that, and this might be one of the questions, how do these rates compare to the rates from previous years? And I was just looking, I left them on my phone. These rates are much higher than any rate we've approved for any lease purchase since 2014. And this just, I think, shows you the times that we're in and that dramatic swing of interest rates, since we even had this conversation about doing lease purchasing for some of our vehicles last year, when we were talking about the budget for this year. And you'll remember, we've had the same conversation, this year's budget process for next year, about how at that time, the interest rates were so low that it made sense to lease purchase lots of our vehicles and equipment. But now you can see that that is actually, they've, they've swung in a, in a different direction now. And so they are a little bit higher than we've seen. I believe that we were at maybe 3.8 was the highest that we've ever had for interest rates on a lease purchase over the last couple of years. So not that that has any impact on, not that that, that makes these good or bad rates overall, just I wanted you to know the comparison that we've had in previous, for previous lease purchases. So I am happy to answer any questions you have, either how we came up with the numbers or the process or where we go from here.
Do you on that have anything that would show total amount paid over the life of the loan?
I do. I didn't include it in here because part of this would be, we did plug all of their interest rates plus their fees into a completely different program. But until we go back and have a discussion with the bank to make sure that that in fact is okay for them to move ahead, we, you know, we might walk away from that conversation and say, no, actually, our interest rate calculations are different than theirs. They formulated their interest rates differently. Now, I'll tell you, I did have a conversation with Oakstar Bank today. They said that, no, they agreed that the way that we calculated the interest versus the way that they did, they didn't think that that would be a problem. So I'll tell you, we, we did 10, we asked, I asked for, I learned a lot this process. We asked for 10 annual payments. So every bank calculates differently. They either calculate on 360 days, 365 days. They might have calculated annually, but with interest starting on January 1, because we're closing on December 30th. Or they might have calculated beginning April 1, because we wanted the first payment to begin there. So that's why there was so much difference. So the difference between the lowest and the next, the second lowest bid is only about $1,400 all-in cost. So the, the total all-in, as we have it calculated, so that would be just a, just a rough estimate for where we'll probably land, is about $50,230. That does include the $1,200 in fees that was proposed by Oakstar in addition to the interest rate. The next lowest bid was about $1,400 more. And then it, it goes from there.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Landis?
Even if any of these have a prepayment penalty, I'm assuming they wouldn't?
We did, I, I would, I would think not. We didn't talk about that. We didn't also make it a requirement. So I can answer that question. But we will, I will confirm that when we put together the, the agreement that that would be something we want to make sure we, it's not a requirement.
Commissioners, I would just like to move on this item. You want to look at it again?
And Mayor, all I really need to know is, are you comfortable in moving ahead with preparing a lease purchase agreement with this bank so that you can look at it at the next meeting?
We normally just go ahead and do it because this had a new bank involved and, and we got really some pretty good bids. We thought we'd let you know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay with moving forward to see that lease agreement?
Okay. Fantastic. And I do want to just make one final comment. I truly appreciate all of the banks kind of coming to the table and asking questions. I do know of at least one other bank that was interested, but at this time wasn't doing the 10-year loan. And we had posed it as a, you know, master lease purchase agreement. So I do like the fact that our local banks are all getting involved and that we've seen lots of interest from them, not just on this item, but also on anytime we've gotten asked for bids on investment rates, things like that. So that is a very positive thing in a community to have your, your local banks interested in doing business with this thing.
So keep it local.
New banks coming to us, good. So I will say our money is the cleanest money in town because we launder all the time. Just kidding.
Thank you. You've come through such a dry spell.
Commissioners, last week, I believe you received an email from Glora about an immediate hazard resolution for 618 North Cedar. I know it wasn't on our agenda today, but I believe, Terry, are you going to come up and discuss this with us? If you want to discuss that with us, we want to take this into consideration also.
Evening, Commissioners and Mayor. We bring forward a resolution for your consideration to request immediate hazard designation for the address at 618 North Cedar. And so we have fire on this. I think most of you were on December 8th. It's been deemed that it's a structural hazard by Fire Chief Mathias and myself. So we'd like to request your consideration for this to be determined as immediate hazard for its immediate removal.
So this is an unusual procedure. Mr. City Attorney, are there any implications for the commission if they pass this versus the regular procedure we go to?
So this is a procedure that has very little notice to the, you're always safer on safer ground when you give more notice. But my understanding is you're wanting to establish barricades and keep people out of the house present. Eventually we'll have a discussion about whether it needs to be raised or whether it can be rehabilitated. For this type of procedure where you're simply barring access to the structure and trying to keep people out, I see less liability than if you're trying to declare an immediate hazard to have it destroyed.
Is that what you're asking for?
Well, the, the structure has been secured. So we hired a contractor to secure the property. So it's all been barricaded. So there's no structural integrity left to the structure. So our request is for it to be taken down, just for the demon of the public of adjoining properties.
Is there insurance on the property, Terry?
There is insurance on the property.
Have we recovered our, our 10% share yet?
I'm not certain if we've recovered, but we've been in communication with the insurance company and they are aware of, they've received all the insurance requirements from our department. And we did have some images. I don't know if they're up, Paul can pull up and put up there. There's a few images we had. It's kind of hard to see with the dark, but it's very well destroyed as far as the structural of the building.
Have you talked to the owners? Do they have any desire to try to rehab this or is it beyond, you say structurally?
It's beyond, I mean, as you see, even the roof rafters, everything is charred. I mean, it's been heavily damaged. Tim could probably answer, Tim not here, Sean could probably answer a lot more questions than I can as far as what the length of time it took to put the fire out. But it's substantial damage. There's not much left to it.
I know the owners aren't, are they contesting in any way the action that we do or don't?
The current, the recorded owner is Barry Gordon. He's, was in the process of trying to sell it to another individual. It was under contract, but there was no actual binding contract to sell it. So he is the one who has this insurance on the structure. The other individual just had liability on the insurance for himself.
Are they aware you're requesting this?
I've spoken, or we've spoken with Mr. Gordon, as well as we've spoken with the other individual. And then we also had a tenant. And so we had three parties involved in this process.
So Terry, if it's barricaded, why are we, why are we requesting immediate removal? We can't just go through the typical process of, of, you know, how we normally go, you know, how we normally move forward?
We were looking at it just for the fact of the integrity of it. We don't want anything to happen, you know, to anything was to collapse or damage the general public or anybody else that happens to go into the structure. I don't know if Sean has anything he can add to that, but based on what I saw, there is not much left to the structure.
And there's snow load.
I'm looking at snow loads, turning ice, snow, to very easily collapse it further. But yeah, it's going to be a process to get it taken down. It's not salvageable at this point. We have put it out for bids. We do, are aware of what cost would be incurred on us. For, so we've received a couple bids on what it would take to get it taken down.
And we'll place a lien on the property?
Yes. We'll be working with the insurance company. They require the percentage up, you know, for.
Are there any ancillary structures on the property, sheds or garage?
There, there's.
Yes, there are.
There's some other stuff.
Anything in those?
We're not aware if there's anything else in those other structures.
Do you have that picture?
Does your bid include Terry Rose now?
No.
Do you have a picture in there of the sheds?
No, I do not.
There are sheds and there's vehicles. Just leave them up.
Yeah, the whole, whole process was just to remove the primary structure, not to touch any of the accessory structures.
Terry pretty well covered it. I mean, a few pictures somewhat undo justice. The way that the rafters burned and everything like that, there's a pull on the floor in one area. So there's a hazard there. We can, somebody walked in there, they didn't know, they called you. It's only a slab, but we can still break it later.
Commissioners, given the condition and the report from the Assistant Fire Chief Inspector, I have no concern to you to consider the resolution.
Thank you. That was the question I was going to ask, because I think the city manager asked implications, but we never got to that point until now. So that makes me feel a little bit better about moving forward with your request then, at least on my, my opinion. Commissioner's, how do you feel? I think you, I think we have consensus to.
Need to adopt the resolution.
You can't, no.
Anyone want to make a motion?
One quick question on this, just thinking forward. If someone goes to rebuild on this property, would, for like neighborhood or visualization, would it be based on the value of an empty lot? If they build a new structure on there, or is it a rebuild?
I think it's.
Probably what is on the appraisal.
Yeah, I think it's based on the appraisal.
It might come in then.
Just sorry, I mean, that is kind of anecdotal, but.
That's a good question.
Commissioner Graves is on it too.
I'd be fine moving forward.
Somebody want to make a motion? That's what I was getting at.
I'll take the motion. Yeah, I'll go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would have made it.
Follow the recommendation that Terry's recommending.
Okay. Motion and a second to move the, to approve the motion for the immediate hazard resolution of six eighteen North Cedar. Any discussion? Is it six thirteen?
Eighteen.
I have six eighteen. Okay, I just, just making sure.
What you're going to have on hand?
Please don't, please don't. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you, Terry.
Why don't you, Melissa, just put it on our website or something?
All right, that'll move us on to comments by our city manager. Thank you. Comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Kayler?
None at this time.
Commissioner Graves?
No comment.
So the none? Okay. Commissioner Clayton?
None at this time.
Commissioner Skidmore?
None.
And I have none either. A few announcements. We have a joint meeting this week, this Wednesday at noon here at City Hall. Study session next Monday at four P M. here at City Hall. And then a regular meeting at ten A M. the twenty-first here at City Hall. Anything else? Come before the commission. All adjourned.